Thank you for joining us this afternoon for the Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs on this Monday, February 6th at 2:00 in room 225. We have a number of bills on this agenda. The one bill that has a lot of public interest, Senate Bill 1230, we're going to put that to the bottom of the agenda because there's going to be a lot of talk. So if you don't mind, the other bills that have far less testimony, we're going to take first. So just FYI, 1230 is going to be pushed to the bottom of the agenda. We have a hard stop at 4:30 and we will allow personal as well as online testimony and give you one minute to say whatever your thoughts are on the measures before us. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have some kind of technical difficulties, this committee will reconvene to discuss any further matters that are on the agenda on Wednesday, the 8th of February in this room at 3:00. As a reminder, we will have your testimony limited to one minute on all of the measures. If the ground rules haven't been stated, we get to our first bill, that is Senate Bill 862 relating to the counties. On our testifiers list, we have Curtis Love from the Department of Planning and Permit has submitted commentary. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 862? If not, members, there's no one here to question and you have Curtis Love's testimony in your packets. We're going to move on to Senate Bill 875 relating to the counties. And this particular measure, we're going to... We have Calvin Seay, Councilman, testifying on behalf of the City Council. He submitted testimony in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 875? If not, members, you can read Councilman Seay's testimony in your packet. The next bill is Senate Bill 1055 relating to elections. On our testifiers list, we have Reese Nakamura from the Attorney General's Office.
Afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name is Reese Nakamura. I'm Deputy Attorney General from the Attorney General's Office. We have submitted our testimonies for SB 1055 and I would be glad to answer any good questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nakamura. John Bickel from Americans for Democratic Action in Hawaii has submitted testimony in support. Victor Ramos has submitted testimony in opposition. And BA McClintock has submitted testimony in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1055? Oh, hi, Arvid.
Hello, Chair. Hello, Vice Chair. Hello, Chair. When you were on the City Council, you headed a committee, so you still did. And Senator Awat, thanks for your notice on Facebook for people to come and testify on various...
Arvid, you have one minute.
Yeah. I just wanted to offer my support, just the support for John Bickel's testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1055? If not, members, any questions of those who are here? Move on to the next measure then. That is Senate Bill 821 relating to fireworks. On our testifiers list, we have Michael Vincent from the Department of Law Enforcement has submitted commentary. Brandon Yamamoto from the Honolulu Police Department. Is Brandon with us on Zoom?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chair Wakai and Committee Members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to testify on this measure. I'm Acting Major Brandon Yamamoto of the Honolulu Police Department, District 8 out in Kapolei. The HPD opposes the bill as the use of drones operated by police for the use of monitoring and collecting evidence of a person illegally deploying fireworks would be problematic under the rules of evidence without a search warrant. In addition, we are concerned of the safety if a drone would happen to be hit by a firework causing the drone to go into a populated area, possibly causing damage or injuries. It's further exacerbated by the efficiency of getting enough drones, training operators, getting licenses for them, and of course, being constricted by the FAA's guidelines for use of drones. Thank you.
Thank you, Major Yamamoto. Stephanie Kendrick from the Human Society. Is Stephanie online? Anyone from the Human Society online? Okay, members, that Stephanie and the Human Society have submitted testimony in support. Serena Stefanic Phillips, also from the Human Society, in support. Zheng Zhiyao from CARES testifying in support. She indicated she would be here, but apparently no Zheng Zhiyao. Lynn Murakami Akatsuka has submitted testimony in opposition. I have an indication here that Samuel Mitchell would be testifying via Zoom. Is Samuel Mitchell with us?
Present. Not present, Chair.
Oh, not present, okay. Also, indication that Alicia Malafuiti would be testifying in person.
Sorry.
Oh, oh, there's Alicia.
Oh, sorry. Chair members, Alicia Malafuiti, I wanted to just not correct the police department, but in 2019, when we passed the bill that Governor Ege signed, it specifically allows drone video, photos, and other eyewitness testimony in prosecuting users of illegal fireworks. So this is a great bill. This fits specifically with the bill that we passed in 2019, which would allow to identify not people, but the properties where those illegal fireworks are being blown up at. That is much different than going in and getting a headshot or a face shot, which is probably one of the issues that they've run into. It's to get the address. And from that address, based on the law from 2019, they can prosecute. So I just wanted to offer that up in addition to my testimony. Thanks.
Thank you, Alicia. That's all I have for people who are planning to submit or planning to show up in person or online. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? On Senate... Oh, hi, Arvid.
First of all, welcome back to the Capitol Building and two separate kinds of Happy New Year. In regards to the fireworks, other than the vets and the elders being affected by the proximity and the altitude of the fireworks during the two separate New Year celebrations, there was a recent incident within one month ago. Somebody smuggled in fireworks inside the prisons. And that's even worse than somebody actually smuggling in a pistol that only shoots blanks. It's going to promote a lot of panic, not just on the part of fellow prisoners, but as well as the police officers and guards.
Thank you, Arvid. Is there anyone else wishing to testify at 821? Members, any questions? Is Major Yamamoto still with us online?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Yamamoto, I'm looking at your testimony and it says here that one of the parts of the bills that raises concern is that you might need a search warrant if the drone were to gather any evidence. How may I understand that? I mean, it's not as if the drone is going to go and hover into someone's backyard and look into their house. Why would you need a search warrant to get drone footage?
The purpose for law enforcement would kind of run into the rules of evidence as far as gaining an advantage that isn't normally seen by an unconstricted person or eye of view.
But a drone would be in the public space and drones are common around the world. So I don't quite see how this is an intrusion of people's personal rights when it's not looking into their homes, looking at the horizon and who the bad actors are popping fireworks illegally.
The view of the drones as an intrusion upon, for law enforcement purposes, is the concern for prosecution-wise?
If we could look at some of the AGs or prosecutors to opine on that. You also mentioned here that the FAA prohibits from flying drones near fireworks, but that prohibition is based on permitted display of fireworks, correct?
Yes.
So if people are popping their fireworks illegally, that FAA prohibition wouldn't govern this, right?
It could depend on where the area is. It is restricted along certain areas such as the freeways and certain areas along flight paths. We do have out in Waianae Side, Kaloa Airport and such that. So it would have to be cleared of any flight paths.
Okay, but that's not what your testimony says. It says specifically that it would be prohibited from flying near fireworks, but I think you should put on here that it's a permitted display.
Permitted displays and events, actually, too.
Thank you. Members, any questions on this measure? Thank you, Major Yamamoto, please. Members, we're going to move on to... Just a reminder, we're moving SB 1230 to the end of the calendar. So we're going to now go on to Senate Bill 1332 relating to emergency management. On our testifiers list, we have Kenneth Harrow, Agent General from the Department of Defense. See online?
Not present, Chair.
Thank you. James Barrows, also from Haima, indicates that he's going to be online. Anybody there?
They are present.
Yeah, got it. Hi, Mr. Barrows.
Hey, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. All emergency management stands at the written testimony in support of Senate Bill 1332. We feel that it aligns our duties and works with our comprehensive management agency plan that we write yearly.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. And we have Tina Yamaki from the Retail Merchants of Hawaii, who's indicated she should be here in person. Tina, in the audience? No, Tina. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on 1332? Yes, hi, Arvid.
I'm sorry that I never submitted any written testimony. As far as Senate Bill 1332 is concerned, the only concern I have is the command and control over the state adjutant general's office when it comes to emergency management. It harkens back to the emergency notice to us. Various people had access to the possibility of approaching nuclear weapon or something and nobody actually stepped forward and notified where we needed to be notified. So that's the only concern I have. The person that actually had the connection because of her military background was still together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Arvid. Arvid, you're always right on time. Thank you. Senate Bill... I'm sorry, members, any questions for those who testified on 1332? Anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure. That is Senate Bill 1470 relating to corrections. First on our testifiers list, we have Tommy Johnson from the Department of Public Safety. Tommy submitted testimony in support. Martha Tordy from the Hawaii Correctional Systems Oversight Commission.
Good afternoon. The commission recommends... We support the intent of this measure and we recommend they extend to all facilities that house women. Only 30% of WCCC currently has camera coverage. That is not good. We are charged with conducting investigations following complaints from inmates and we need that coverage to be able to do those investigations. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Kamakana from UPW.
Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Oliphante, Kamakana Kamala, United Public Workers, UPW largely stands on its written comments. We would like to note, though, that we did... There is an error contained in our testimony in that compliance period is not actually six months. It would be 12 months. But given that, even given that, our concerns remain that that may not be enough time, particularly if you decide to add the Oversight Commission's recommendations to expand it to all correctional facilities. Thank you for that opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Kamakana. Kat Brady from Community Alliance of Prisons.
Aloha, Chair Wakai and members of the committee. Kat Brady, we're in strong support of this measure. I apologize, though. I was writing a whole bunch of house testimony that day and I put the wrong bill number, but it's SB 1470. We agree with the Hawaii Oversight Commission that it should be for all facilities that house women. And you know, sex assault is not a new issue at WCCC. And the fact that 53 assaults occurred makes me wonder, where is the Prison Rape Elimination Act person who's at each facility? Where is that person? And where was that person when all this stuff is happening? So Pria should definitely be concerned with the fact that cameras aren't working. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. Have a nice day, everybody.
Thank you, Kat. Melissa Pabishak has submitted testimony in support and we have a number of other individuals also submitting testimony in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1470? Yes, hi, Arvid.
Okay, I'm... All Senate members. Like, we have some new support personnel. I'm Arvid Youngquist and I was a volunteer for the corrections, the volunteers, and also a volunteer for the judiciary for a while. I agree and support the testimonies offered by Kat Brady and Melissa. It's a, I'm sure, to-the-point testimony. Not only should all women's correction facilities be included, people who are found out to be incarcerated on the mainland, such as Arizona or Nevada, should be afforded the same courtesy and protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Arvid. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1470? Any questions for those who testified? Senator Oliphante?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for the representative from UPW. Thank you for your comments today. Do you know if in the past... I know you're new to UPW, but do you know, to your recollection, if there has been discussions for body worn cameras with the Department of Public Safety?
I am not familiar with any discussion that's occurred previously, but I think part of it was that the implementation of any policy regarding body cams would change the conditions of employment and thereby would be up for negotiation. So I'm not sure. I know that in previous testimony by Mr. Johnson, they have talked about the digital cameras in their request for funding for that specifically, but in terms of body cams, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Members, any further questions? Martha?
I have a question for you. I didn't realize that only 30% of the women's correctional facility is covered with cameras. So I think it's finally we get to the point of having more coverage, especially considering all the misteeth that have been done at that facility in the past. But this bill, in addition to having coverage of the facilities through stationary cameras, is asking for, as Senator Oliphante mentioned, to Kamakana, the use of body cams. Is that necessary? Because I mean, that's a huge added cost. It's a lot of training for the guards here. Then it probably will open up the opportunity to have a discussion about all corrections officers. And the male prisoners have to wear body cams as well. Is that a little too much? Or do you think that that's necessary to have more than just 100% stationary cameras around the women's facilities, but that they also need to be wearing body cams?
We would prefer the body cams, but I certainly understand what you're saying about the cost and implementing that. And we're not going to be real strict about that.
You just want 100% of the coverage?
Yes. And also, Department of Public Safety is trying to resolve this problem at this time.
Right, thank you. Members, any further questions? We are going to move on to the next measure. That is Senate Bill 1591. First on our testifiers list is Janine Udoi from the Attorney General's Office.
Not present, Chair.
No, I'm sorry, she's here in person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Oliphante, and Members of the Committee. My name is Janine Udoi and I am testifying today on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. As set forth in our written testimony, we believe that this bill could be strengthened by adding a declaration of its public purpose. This will better protect the bill against potential constitutional challenges. We've also recommended wording that we believe would add additional clarity to the use of the monies in the special fund. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments. I will be available for questions.
Thank you, Janine. We have Zizi Ziyang from Kapalama NSW has submitted... Or is this individual here? This person has submitted testimony in support. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation. I believe Tom is with us via Zoom.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. We are concerned about this bill because it's a new special fund for kind of a broad purpose and there are not very many controls in the bill on what it may be used for. We are concerned that it would violate 37-52.3 HRS, which is the budgeting standard for what special funds should be and should not be. Kat, answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. We have Robert Cavaco from Chopo has submitted testimony in opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1591? Hi, Arvid.
Chair, Vice Chair, names, Arvid Youngquist. I want to first of all thank the Attorney General's Office for providing testimony. I also appreciate the testimony submitted by the Tax Foundation. In regards to special funds, I think it may be warranted to agree to provide the necessary camera and the necessary location and also in the prison system that our ladies are sent to serve their time. And it really will be something that's positive to prevent being sued later on when the Innocence Project gets a prisoner released after 23 years of prison time. A woman can serve that time, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Arvid. I think your commentary was on the previous bill about the cameras in the women's facilities. This bill is about using TET monies to contract out security at public places.
Oh, I didn't see the overlap. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We always welcome your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on 1591? Members, any questions of those who have testified? Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure. That is Senate Bill 1161 relating to active duty military entitlements. We have on our testifiers list, Thomas Williams from ERS has submitted testimony in opposition. Brigadier General Walter Ross from the National Guard.
Hi, welcome. Thank you, sir. Chair, Vice Chair, Committee. I'm Brigadier General Walter Ross, Representative, State Department of Defense. We stand on our written comments and I'm available for any questions in the committee behalf.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Ross. Members, any questions of Mr. Ross? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For showing up. Okay, we're going to move to the last bill on the agenda. That is Senate Bill 1230. First on our testifiers list is David Day from the Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Oliphante, Members of the Committee. My name is Dave Day. I'm Special Assistant to the Attorney General. The Attorney General strongly supports the intent of SB 1230. For nearly two centuries, Hawaii has enacted and perpetuated reasonable, common sense gun laws intended to keep the people safe from gun violence. But following the US Supreme Court's 2022 case of New York State Rifle Association... No, pardon me. New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin, Hawaii has had to reassess its longstanding laws regulating firearms. This bill does that. SB 1230 will help preserve the safe and welcoming character of our society while also respecting the reasonable exercise of Second Amendment rights. In the fast-changing field of Second Amendment law, SB 1230 represents a bill that the Department of the Attorney General can defend and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Members, we have more than 200 pieces of testimony on this particular measure. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to jump to the individuals who indicated that they would be either in person or via Zoom and then open it up for testimony later, but won't belabor you by reading all of the names of those who have submitted testimony. So the next individual who has indicated that they would like to testify is Angelina Mercado from the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Angelina... Oh, Angelina is here on Zoom. Welcome.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. I'm Angelina Mercado, the Executive Director of the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. On behalf of the Coalition and our 28-member program statewide, I am submitting to you this testimony in strong support of SB 1230. This measure would have a profound impact on the public safety of survivors, domestic violence, or children, and most importantly, the nonprofit organizations that serve them. Purportories of domestic violence with access to guns use the threat of gun violence to inflict emotional abuse on their partners and escalate to homicide. The presence of a firearm in domestic violence situations increases the risk of homicide for women by 500%. Additionally, more than half the women killed by gun violence are killed by family members or intimate partners. Recently, in 2022, a father under a restraining order killed his three daughters during a court-ordered visitation at a church. We must, must create safe places where survivors of domestic violence are free to heal and seek help after traumatic events. I know time is limited. Mahalo for the opportunity and thank you for hearing this measure.
Thank you, Ms. Mercado. Rachel Logan from Moms Demand Action has submitted testimony in support. Andrew Namiki Roberts from the Hawaii Firearms Coalition.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Oh, but he's here in the room. Thank you.
Good morning, sorry, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. My name is Andrew Namiki Roberts. I'm here representing Hawaii Firearms Coalition and Hawaii's one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand law-abiding gun owners. This bill goes way beyond what the Supreme Court has laid out in Bruin. With its sensitive places, it kind of put some guidelines on there which allowed sensitive places to be declared in a limited scope. We cannot turn around and say anywhere and everywhere is a sensitive place because we believe that it may be good for public health. What they said was these places had to be traditional and longstanding, and most of the places that are listed in this bill go beyond that. I would sort of issue caution to the legislators when passing this bill. We could end up with a lot less than what you think. If this bill goes forward, it will be challenging our courts, and along with that challenge, we'll be looking at licensing in general. There wasn't a ban on concealed carry in the United States up until nineteen seventy-six. That's when the first concealed carry license was issued. Based on that, bills like this, if they move forward and they're too overreaching, will likely lead to lawsuits that could see a much wider win for gun rights and go beyond what you think it will. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Deborah Niemath from Brady, Hawaii.
Good afternoon, thank you for this opportunity to testify. I am President of Brady, Hawaii, and we stand in strong support of this bill. And when the fifty, fifty-five people are killed by guns in Hawaii each year, the Supreme Court in Bruin made it clear that the holding in Bruin was neither a regulatory straitjacket nor a regulatory blank check, and that restrictions on guns in sensitive places are still permissible so long as they are objective. SB twelve thirty must pass. It ensures that the licensing procedure for concealed guns weeds out individuals who would be a threat to others or themselves. It also sets out a list of sensitive places where firearms cannot be carried that is comprehensive enough to protect the safety of Hawaii citizens. It would be illogical to deem a swath of locations not sensitive simply because the risk is too large. Thank you, and I have something that I stand by my written testimony.
Yes, we are, you receive it, thank you, thank you, Deborah. Crystal Pilato from Every Town for Gun Safety, I believe is joining us, oh, via Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Crystal Opelato, and I serve as Policy Counsel for Every Town for Gun Safety. Thank you, Chair, for bringing forth SB twelve thirty. This bill is essential for keeping Hawaii communities protected from the risks imposed by the Supreme Court's decision in the Bruin case. Our team at Every Town has worked closely with the states whose concealed carry laws were impacted by the Bruin ruling. And we've identified several key safety gaps that need to be filled in Bruin's wake. One, states like Hawaii now need to create detailed eligibility requirements for who can carry guns in public with the goal of ensuring that anyone licensed to carry a gun in public has received proper safety training and that they've been carefully vetted under objective standards. Two, we need to see uniformity in how applicants are vetted across the state, making sure that issuing authorities are consulting the full scope of appropriate sources to ensure the applicant won't pose a public safety risk if allowed to carry a gun in public. Three, we need to see thoughtful delineation of where concealed carry license holders can and can't bring guns in public. This bill meets all of those needs, and it's written to be consistent with the constitutional boundaries of the Supreme Court's decision in Bruin. We urge your support of SB twelve thirty, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Tina Yalaki from the Retail Merchants Association indicated she'd be here and has submitted testimony in support. Stephanie Sakamoto from the Hawaii Credit Union League indicated she'd be just, oh, there's Stephanie.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. Stephanie Sakamoto, on behalf of the Hawaii Credit Union League, our comments are in support, limited to the sensitive places portion, which includes financial institutions. Thank you, available for questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. Marcus Tanaka might be joining us via Zoom.
Hello, I'm going to talk about something that's further down this bill, the interview requirements by HPD. You know, during COVID, HPD was shut down, you couldn't just walk in. You had to buy a gun, you had to do RSVP system online. A lot of people couldn't get a reservation so they can purchase a firearm. It took me eight months of trying, not only logging on once a day, but multiple times an hour to get an appointment so I can buy one firearm. So if you guys want to interview people, the nationwide average of concealed carry weapons holders is eight percent of the adult population. That's sixty thousand people in Hawaii is going to have this license. Let's cut that in half, thirty thousand. That means HPD is going to have to do one-hundred-and-fifty interviews a day because they're only open Monday to Friday, and assuming they're open on weekday, that's holidays, like Christmas, and which they're not, but let's say they open Christmas, just to make the numbers fine. That means you're going to have to one-hundred-and-fifty interviews a day. Are they going to bring three hundred more officers? If not, I'm going to be waiting one year to get my CCW permit. Then by the time I get it, I got to start my appointment for my next renewal because our permit's only valid for one year. I have my CCW permit, I passed all the background checks done by HPD. I took all the required training they required. I did everything under the book. I'm even in a FBI database to monitor if I commit a crime in another state. And now you're telling me the only place I can really carry my firearm is the public sidewalk? Because if this bill passes about the sensitive places portion, I can't carry anywhere. Let's have permission from everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Michael Elliott.
Senator Richard Seth Wakai. My name is Michael Elliott, member of Hawaii Firearms Coalition, but here testifying as an individual. What I wanted to speak about today, I submitted some online testimony and had added some additional items and stuff that I will gladly forward to you. I'm strong opposition to the bill twelve thirty. The bill is attempt, basically an end-around of the surf of the Bruin and how the sensitive places piece is applied. The location is really defined in Bruin, Helen, Catano, McDonald, which follows. Legislative buildings, courthouse, polling places, schools, public jails and prisons. That's kind of what that bound of those historic sensitive places are. The bill's targeted against law-abiding concealed carry holders. I don't see anything in here about criminals. There's nothing in here that directs anything about criminals who are out there committing crime that could care less about a sensitive place or a gun-free zone, right? They don't care. And those are the people that we, as law-abiding citizens of this state, are constantly under threat from. In the current Siegel v. Plackton, Judge Baum issued TROs against New Jersey listing all the same places that we have listed in this bill. So I think you should look at what's going on at the federal level in these cases with similar-type bills before making any decisions and moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Adrielle Lam.
Good afternoon, Chair, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm testifying as an individual. I'm a twenty-four-year military veteran. I swore an oath to defend the Constitution in the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic. This legislation is in violation of the Second Amendment right to bear arms being necessary to the security of a free state as well as eroding the constitutional right of every Americans under the First Amendment, right to freedom of speech, and right to peaceably assemble, and the Fourth Amendment right against unreasonable search and seizure. This legislation is a direct insult to every law-abiding Hawaii resident who knows, understands, and respects the use of firearms for the purpose of safety and security. It is not a toy, it is not a movie prop, it is not a use for a threatening gesture, and it's not a convenient tool for political rhetoric. Overbearing legislation like this only serves to demonstrate how meaningless these verbose laws have become. It has no other enforcement other than the willingness of law-abiding citizens to subject themselves further to uncautious restrictions. We used to have a tradition of enjoying fireworks on New Year's Eve. Since the ban on fireworks, we now have unfettered year-round fireworks. Please do not do the same with firearms. I have more testimony, but I'd like to submit that for you first. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrielle. Unfortunately, we're having some technical glitches that we need to get worked out. So we're going to take a brief, perhaps five-minute recess and come back on this particular measure. Brief recess. Thank you for your patience. We're reconvening this Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs on this Monday, February eighth. While we're continuing on with Senate Bill twelve thirty, on our testifiers list, we have Jason Wolford. He's going to join us via Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon, thank you, Chairman, Committee, all Committee members. I have submitted written testimony in opposition to this bill. I strongly disagree with this bill, as stated before, on constitutionality charges of sensitive places and the other jurisdictions that this bill has been written off of other states which are currently involved in litigation and currently have TROs placed on bills that seem to mirror exactly as this bill is. It seems to me this committee of pass would waste taxpayers' dollars of the citizens of the state and not wait and find out what the other courts have finally ruled on this before we wind up ourselves in court for this also. If you would list, if you have any questions about my testimony, I'd be happy and available for comments or answers.
Thank you for joining us, Jason. Next, we have Michael Rice, I believe also on Zoom.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Michael.
Aloha, Michael Rice, Levant Makah. Basically, I'm not going to build off of what everybody else is talking about how unconstitutional this is. I'm going to talk about how unfair this is, especially to people like me who rely upon public transit. Now, I ride the bus and hopefully I'll be riding the rail pretty soon. If I, should this bill pass, I will have to go buy a car, and I won't be able to buy an electric car. I'll have to buy gas because I was abused. And I'll have to go everywhere I go with my firearm. I'm going to have to drive that car around, even if it's a trivial task. And again, you people are trying to ban it everywhere, so it's like, what's the point? I will add on something now that I have a little bit more time, I thought it was going to take more. There are several mainland groups just waiting to sue the state should this bill come into being. National Associates, Grand Rights, Arms Policy Coalition, Guns of America, the NRA if they feel like it. Let's see, what else? Probably about ten more that I don't know of. And they've been winning all their court cases right now in the mainland for similar bills like these. They've had TROs and injunctions put on, so no enforcement of laws. And there's, and every time it's come up, the state, the judges have said, you do not have, for the states aren't trying to defend the laws, you do not have the applicable laws that you stated you have. And we're not going to give you time because you should have had these laws before you put these bills out. So that's another question the state needs to ask itself. If it's willing to pass this, it must be ready to defend it because the judges aren't going to give you time to come up with it after you go to court. And other than that, I stand on the rest of my testimony.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Sabrina Sumner, also, I believe, on Zoom.
Not present, Chair.
You have Todd Yukutake on Zoom, I believe.
Aloha, please see my testimony for references. I am Todd Yukutake, and I oppose this bill. The Supreme Court's Second Amendment decision last year said the government has a burden to prove firearm restrictions are backed by historical precedent. This means laws that were generally present in the states, not territories, around the time period of the US Constitution ratification in seventeen eighty-nine. SB one-two-three-zero does not meet this burden. New York and New Jersey's sensitive places and carry restriction laws were recently halted due to not having historical precedent. In New Jersey, the legislature should have had the historical precedent prior to voting on the law. They did not. Also read my SCOTUS comments. I recommend voting no, or at least deferring or putting this bill on hold until you have a chance to see and analyze the historical precedent on each of these restrictions. Remember, people like me who have a CCW license go through mental and criminal background checks. Remember, we are the good guys. Mahalo.
Thank you, Todd. Next, we have Jamie Detweiler.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Jamie Detweiler, President Hawaii Federation of Republican Women, testifying in strong opposition. I stand on my testimony as written, but I'd like to highlight some of the points contained in my testimony. First off, a couple of other testifiers have already spoken to the Second Amendment as well as the Fourteenth Amendment, which protects an individual's right to carry a handgun for self-defense outside of the home. Secondly, as mentioned earlier as well by Todd, do you have those historical documents related to drafting SB one-two-three-zero? I'll let you think about that and consult on that with each other. There is no historical tradition cited in SB one-two-three-zero. Additionally, who adjudicates the issue of a person found to be lacking the essential character or temperament necessary? This seems a bit subjective to me, ambiguous and unconstitutional. Additionally, what are the credentials of the licensing authority? The people that are going to be adjudicating that, right? And I'd like to just finish on a personal note. I live in Mililani, been a resident there for thirty-five years. As all of you know, there was a terrible incident last week affecting and impacting our community. And there was a woman who was seriously injured by somebody who was crazed, for lack of a better word. Had there been somebody who was licensed to conceal carry, there would have been less critical injuries in that incident. I'm a mom, a grandmother, and I stand on my testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for joining us, Jamie. Chris Marvin.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair members. Aloha, Chris Marvin, I'm a retired, excuse me, retired Army Officer and combat-linened veteran of the war in Afghanistan. I'm also a Veteran Engagement Lead for Every Town for Gun Safety nationally, and I strongly support SB twelve thirty. As a veteran, I like to remind folks that there's several places in Hawaii where no individual can or will have the discretion to carry a personal firearm in public. Schofield, Pearl Harbor, Hickam, Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Military installations are the ultimate sensitive locations. Only MPs and soldiers on the range have guns. The military understands the danger of possessing weapons when weapons are in the wrong hands in the wrong places at the wrong time. And the military gun culture is based on three pillars: training, safety, and accountability. That is why we have the strictest prohibitions on carrying firearms in the military. So must Hawaii. Along with sensitive places, SB twelve thirty protects small business owners by prohibiting guns inside their places of business unless explicitly allowed. Imagine how many mom-and-pop shops will be relieved not to confront a man with a gun who they want out of their store? How many teenage waitresses will not be forced to ask a restaurant patron with a pistol if they have a permit? The opponents of this bill talked a lot about rights and freedom that I protect when I'm protected as a uniform. Let's give Hawaii the right to not live in fear of gun violence and our legislature the freedom to govern our state the way we want to keep us all safe.
Thank you, thank you for joining us, Chris. Ed Sniffen from the Department of Transportation, where his representative has submitted testimony in support. Ilima de Costa from Ho'opono Namea Ola. Welcome.
So this is my daughter. She's dead because she was shot in the back of the head with one bullet. I urge, I am the mother of a child who's been shot and killed. I think that that is a very rare thing. There's not too many people here who can say that. And I urge the legislature and each individual member to rigorously perform their duties in protecting the public safety by exercising extreme due diligence with regard to protecting sensitive places. I do not want to see other families experience what I and my family have experienced. The loss of a child is horrific. The road to recovery is often nonlinear and fraught with pitfalls. Death by gun violence is preventable. Yet, according to the CDC, death by gun violence is the leading cause of death for Hawaii's youth ages twelve to twenty-four. That is not acceptable to me, and that should not be acceptable to you. Unfortunately, despite considerable efforts to pass common-sense firearm legislation, it is my humble opinion that SB twelve thirty does not go far enough to protect Hawaii's residents or visitors by creating clear and unambiguous rules for concealed firearm licensees. So I stand on my testimony with additional items and what I, the details and why I think the bill doesn't go far enough. But basically, there's just too many loopholes where people can be shot and killed. So unless you want to lose your child to gun violence, you may want to consider your opposition to the you may want to consider your opposition to this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ilima. Miho Koito from the Bankers Association has submitted testimony in support. Junior Tupai.
Mahalo, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair Lafonte, and mahalo to the members of the Committee for Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs for the opportunity to testify in strong opposition to SB 1230. Hawaii State Constitution, Article 1, Section 2 states, "All persons are free by nature and are equal in their inherent and inalienable rights." Among these rights are enjoyment of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in acquiring and possessing a property. Inherent means it permanently exists. It also means it cannot be separated from. Inalienable means it cannot be sold or transferred, cannot be prejudiced or foreign to. Hawaii State Constitution, Article 1, Section 5 states, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process, nor be denied the equal protection of the laws, nor be denied the person's enjoyment to the civil rights or be discriminated against in the exercise thereof because of their race, religion, sex, or ancestry." Every individual has the right to their, to due process and to equal protection of the laws. I understand the objective of SB 1230 is to ensure the security and safety of Hawaii. However, when a legislation that is proposed has the potential to diminish our inherent and inalienable rights, we have to reconsider other contingencies to mitigate these issues. Mahalo for the opportunity and thanks for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Tupai. Jim Hotchberg.
Thank you very much, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. And I apologize for submitting testimony so late, but I found out about this this morning. I'm opposed to this law. I'm a lawyer. I do constitutional litigation in Hawaii. Been licensed and practicing here since 84, 39 years. I'm the attorney locally that did the Livingston versus Ballard and then became Logan case, which is why we have concealed carry rights here. And what, if you look at my testimony, it deals with the Bruin case, but a lot of people have talked about that. There are two really important points. One is the history of gun restrictions in Hawaii before statehood is really immaterial. What the Supreme Court said is, if the tradition and history of the United States under the U.S. Constitution in the founding era and the Civil War era when the 14th, 15th amendments were passed, that is what can be justified as infringing on Second Amendment rights. So what Hawaii did before statehood and actually before territorial times, because the Civil War and founding era was prior to that, really doesn't matter. And if I can, the other thing is, like other constitutional amendments, rights, in order to infringe them, the state cannot exercise an undue burden. And we know that from the abortion history, 50 years of litigation. So what this bill is full of is undue burden on a Second Amendment right to keep and bear arms. As an attorney that did this case, I will sue again depending on if it's necessary later, but I'd rather work with you. In the meantime, if you have questions, I'm happy to, you know, help you understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. That's all I have as individuals indicating that they wanted to testify on this measure. Is there anyone in this room that would like to testify? I'm going to start from the front and go work our way to the back, please.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Soleil Rochay. I am a wife and mother of three. I work for Active Self-Protection, which is a company that educates millions around the world on violence and self-protection on a daily basis. I am a NRA certified firearms instructor, deadly force instructor, and pepper spray instructor. And I strongly oppose this bill. Personally, I and two children were attacked by a homeless man experiencing a violent episode in Kanohe. My husband works at the 24-hour fitness at Windward City Shopping Center, where recently Mr. Mike Chu was murdered. My husband works right there where it happened. My son has been threatened with violence multiple times at his workplace. My older sister was attacked and assaulted by a neighbor while walking her dog. My younger sister had a break-in by a druggie that was using heavy tools, stole a bunch of stuff from her house, damaged the house significantly. My point is that there's a ton of crime and I am highly trained to defend myself and I'd like to be able to do so where crime happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ture.
Can I leave this? There's more?
Yes, thank you. Yes, is it Amanda? Angela, sorry, Angela.
Aloha, Kayaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Public Safety Committee. My name is Angela and testifying in strong support and I will be providing comments about the historical premise of what constitutes a sensitive place. So we're going to look at page 21 of the Bruin decision. And on page 21, there is also a reference to the sensitive place doctrine and the writ assertoriori. So in the Bruin decision, the Supreme Court found that Manhattan did not satisfy the proper cause requirement and therefore Manhattan could not be characterized as a sensitive place. So in order for Honolulu to characterize sensitive places, we have to look into what are the historical, what is the historical basis? What are the historical parameters and historical analogies to characterize a sensitive place? Which leads us to page 21, Bruin. Historical record yields relatively few 18th and 19th century sensitive places where weapons were altogether prohibited. For example, legislative assemblies, polling places, courthouses. We are also aware of no disputes regarding the lawfulness of such prohibitions. We therefore can assume it settled that these locations were sensitive places. And also, so when we try to get a modern analogous example, there is a limit because the Second Amendment right is limited, page 12. Like most rights from Bruin, the right secured by the Second Amendment is not unlimited. And on page 20 and 22 of the writ of certiorari, the government should only be permitted,
Angela, can you summarize?
I will summarize. Should only be permitted to restrict the Second Amendment if it can provide physical defense comparable to the individual right to bear arms. This can be accomplished by ensuring that would-be criminals are prevented by more than the normative power of illegal prohibition to remain unarmed through law enforcement, armed security, metal detectors, and other defensive instruments. Thank you for that opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Angela. There's a gentleman in the blue shirt.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you, Chair, and the members of the committee. My name is John Abbott. I am a former director of the Hawaii Firearms Coalition, but I'm here as an individual today. I strongly oppose this bill. Everyone talked quite a bit about the constitutionality of this bill based upon previous decisions. I want to bring it more to a personal note. As we previously described, there was a horrific attack last week on a young mother and her infant in a parking lot. I want to ask you, before you pass this or wish for your vote, imagine that's your family. Imagine that's your baby being attacked. We know that the person who intervened also got beaten with an inch of his life because he was not able to defend himself. We have waited. Let's see, I got my permit to carry about a month ago, this early this year. I waited six months for that to happen. I applied the date Bruin was passed down. Delaying concealed carry is killing people. And before you decide to vote for this, decide whether you want the blood of those victims on your hands. Because if you pass this, you will be responsible. Sensitive places should not be a way to deny people their rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Yes, this gentleman took your hand up.
Members of the PSM Committee, thank you for your time. My name is Ryan Tenherro and I stand on my written testimony in opposition to SB 1230. Thing I want to highlight on this bill is concerning the personal references aspect is very problematic, particularly because it essentially turns a right into a job application, basically. It's also intrusive on not only applicant because they have to give an interview, but also on their references, who have to go in person, either in-person, phone call, or teleconference to give, at least can account on whether someone should have a concealed carry license. And this constitutes a waste of time. When it comes to exercise of rights, there shouldn't be any waste of time for things like this. And I urge you that when you consider everything that's been presented to you, that consider this aspect as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there, so just a gentleman in the gray shirt? Anyone else wishing to testify, Officer?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Joseph Trinidad, Major Home Records Division of the Honolulu Police Department. The Honolulu Police Department appreciates the intent of Senate Bill Number 1230 relating to firearms and submits the following comments. "In the area of sensitive places, it is too broad and will be difficult to enforce." "The bill proposes that several and public and all private properties be classified as sensitive places." "That this is a concern for places with multiple businesses such as a shopping center, where individual businesses may allow firearms on their premises." "The second concern is a request for the applicant to provide four references." "We believe that these four references will be overly biased and subjective in favor of the applicant." "One to four references would not outweigh a decision to deny an applicant a license to carry for disqualifying reasons." "The objectivity of a person's mental health and criminal background check provides specific indicia whether or not a person is suitable to carry a firearm in public." "The references would not aid in the decision of approving or denying the application." "Our third concern is that in-person interviews will cause significant delays in the application process." "Currently, the applicant provides and declares to all required information thus used to conduct a thorough background check by completing an application in all the required forms." "An in-person interview would not provide any additional specific or clear indicia whether or not a person is suitable to carry a firearm in public." "Our last concern is that we do not believe the hearing for a denied application for license to carry should be conducted by the district court system." "The Honolulu Police Department appreciates the committee's consideration of our concerns regarding Senate Bill Number 1230 relating to firearms and thanks you for the opportunity to testify." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trinidad.
Aloha and good afternoon. I'm Tina Yamaki with the Retail Merchants of Hawaii, and we are in support of this bill, but we do ask for one recommendation, and that's to really carve out retailers. On any given day, it is a big public gathering of people, not only in our stores, but in our shopping malls as well. Every day, we're seeing more and more shoplifters coming in and getting more and more bold. They're fighting back and they're fighting against our employees. What we're scared of is somebody's going to want to be the hero and try and shoot this person and unfortunately hits one of our customers or, you know, our employees as well. And so we're really concerned about this. We want to be sure that when our employees go to work and when our people come and shop in our stores, they feel safe there. They know that they can go and then shop. We know criminals will always be criminals and they're not going to follow the law, but at least this might give them some sense of security. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. A gentleman in the yellow shirt.
Thanks for having me. I'm with Hawaii Tactical Division. My name is Peter. Just real quick, so you guys know, more than 90% of these mass shootings happen in gun-free zones. That's a lot. So I understand your guys' intent, which is safety, and I get that. But to disarm the good guys in these areas is, is not a good idea. Second, the interviews. So Bruin decision has ruled that the Second Amendment is not a second-class right. It's just as much something as, just as much a right as freedom of speech. So to have an interview with HPD to exercise their freedom of speech is kind of like what we're looking at here. Lastly, you guys, I'm going to open one class up to all you guys or if you guys want to sit in, in one of the CCW classes that we hold. We're teaching good stuff out there. We're teaching a lot of de-escalation, a lot of retreat. That's the kind of stuff we're teaching. We're not teaching you to go out there and start shooting people. That's not what we want. And there's a shooting proficiency test as well. So to worry about someone getting hit by a stray bullet, there's a shooting proficiency test set by HPD. So if you guys want to get with me after, I would be glad to hold a class special for all you guys. We could come to you guys free of charge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If there's any questions opposed, send it to the panel.
I have a question for Major Trinidad. Yes, Mr.? Hi, Major. Question on your testimony on the last page, on your last concern regarding how HPD doesn't believe a hearing for denied application for license to carry should be conducted in the district court system. So if not there, then do you have any alternative solutions or proposals?
You know, rules, chief, we all, because right now, Vice, what it's proposing, district courts for criminal. This is not criminal. This is administrative. Basically, we are, we're setting rules in place and that rules in place are, they're in place or we would conduct the hearing.
So you would prefer for you folks to do it?
Yes, because we'll be clogging up the district court system, Vice.
And basically, that would be by county law enforcement office, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you know that one because this is county. Everybody keeps on talking about the Honolulu Police Department. This is for all four counties. And you folks know, there's four. We've got four counties. We've got four different set of rules. So for us, person from the Honolulu Police Department, yeah, to put, for appeals, they're going to put in district court. I'm sorry, district court is for criminal cases. This is not criminal. This is administrative.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Major. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Are there, I pointed out some other pertinent points in your testimony that have concerned with the bill. Are there other amendments specifically that HPD would be willing to offer the committee if they choose to look at them to address those other concerns we brought up earlier?
Yeah, we're open to, again, we're law enforcement. We're not the lawmakers. From our standpoint, we're looking at enforceability. And if we can come to some common agreement, if it's enforceable, because it's not enforceable. You know what I'm saying? So, yeah, we'd be willing to open discussion.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Really, really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Last one more thing. Chris? Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate your testimony. You heard the concerns of the HPD with some of the mechanics of the measure, you know, which could detract from the intent. Would you, for your organization, do individually be supportive if the committee were to consider it to make changes that were suggested by the Honolulu Police Department to address the concerns that were raised out by him?
Specifically with regard to shrinking the number or the type of sensitive places?
Um, that, the district court portion of it. And to further, I guess, to amend the sensitive places, one of the roots.
Right.
Just what your feedback would be?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, you sit here and listen to different sides of this argument and we have some amazing gun owners here, right? Who are, who are talking, they're responsible, they're trained. I talked about training, safety, and accountability that the military puts in place. Most of the people here testifying in opposition to this bill are fantastic gun owners that cause no public threat whatsoever, no matter, even if we had no laws about, you know, about sensitive places or anything like that. We're not legislating for them, right? We're legislating for the outliers. We're legislating for the people. We talked about instances where there was an attack and only someone had a gun to stop that attack. Well, what if the attacker was armed, right? Not everybody that's going to be able to obtain a CCW is going to be of sound mind and body at all times for the rest of their life. So once they're armed, they're armed. Once they possess a permit, they possess a permit. So we need to protect all of our sensitive places and the sensitive people who are in them, right? And so I think that, you know, when we talk about the retail association, that's a, that's a great comment that, you know, that, that person who whips out their gun to be the vigilante to stop someone from shoplifting is going to kill employee of a coffee shop, you know? And that's, that's what the legislature is in charge of protecting. So there's definitely room for compromise in identifying the appropriate sensitive places. And of course, the processes need to be efficient, but those processes also need to be thorough so that we know that the only people who are able to carry guns in any public place, sensitive or not, are people who are as well-trained as the people who are here opposing this bill.
And what about the comment of HPD insofar as the personal references test? And what about the comment of HPD insofar as the personal references test could be something that, I mean, that they feel it would be, you know, more, their opinion was it would create a loophole. Pass it, would you react, feedback on that?
Yeah, you know, the fact that we're sitting here talking about this is basically closing what is a loophole for the state, right? Again, you know, the Supreme Court made a decision that changed our ability to govern our own, our own state when it comes to keeping ourselves safe. So we're trying to, okay, they don't like how we did it, so let's redo it and let's, let's, let's close those loopholes. As far as the processes, I mean, we do trust law enforcement and we trust the district attorney and we trust, you know, the you lawmakers to make sure that the process is appropriate. We have other states that are dealing with the same thing. We look to them for, for advice and for, you know, precedent as to what is working. I, you know, specifically to the references, I mean, if there aren't, if they aren't there, we need to find another way to ensure that the people who are, you know, allowing to conceal carry weapons are trustworthy.
Sure. Members, any further questions?
A request for the Attorney General's Office, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Day, for staying with us. Question, I know that the administration has also another bill. And one of the difference, as you highlighted in the testimony, had to do with the mandatory insurance coverage. So to your knowledge, are there any other states post-Bruin decision that have implemented insurance requirements?
Yes, I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, the state of New Jersey has, and the city of San Jose has one that's similar. My understanding is that the city of San Jose and its insurance provision, at least at the district court level, survived an initial challenge. I'm not aware of a challenge specifically regarding the New Jersey one, but New Jersey specifically is a state that did enact one. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the version that we proposed largely mirrors the New Jersey version.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I'm Mr. Day, you can sit there for just a second. Followed to Senator Elafante's question, I'm looking at your suggested amendments for mandatory insurance coverage. With liability not less than $100,000 per person with an aggregate limit of not less than $300,000 per occurrence. Just give me an idea, like, how much is insurance policy that looks like, what would that cost on any of these?
I don't know, off the, you know, sitting here today. One of the reasons why, so let me just kind of back up a little bit. One of the reasons why we decided to, or in the proposed version, made the effective date of that amendment January first, 2025, was so that we could at least get a little bit of lead time to make some determinations regarding how the mandatory insurance provision would be applied to see how the market would react. And ultimately, we think that at this point, putting this provision in now would allow the insurance market to adjust. And then perhaps in a year, we could then sort of modify it before it comes into effect. So the answer to your question is, I don't know the answer to your question. We probably will have a better idea in a year if this becomes law.
So do any of the insurance carriers offer gun insurance?
I think that, and so there's a little bit of speculation here, so bear with me. I think that since Bruin and the new measures that states have had to adopt in order to deal with the effects of Bruin and the more, and the prevalence of guns in society. This is, there may be insurance products on the market that could cover situations in which, you know, that could basically cover it, whether it be homeowners insurance, car insurance, something like that. But with, because this is relatively gonna be a new product, ultimately, I don't think that there's gonna be a lot of data at this point.
I'm trying to understand this suggestion you're making here, because it sounds like there's no state farm, all state that does gun insurance. And you're hoping that Hawaii, New Jersey, and others will start creating a market so that these insurance carriers do offer gun insurance. But let's say by January of 2025, there's still nobody entering that market. That provision would negate much of this bill, right? Because nobody could get insurance, then nobody could even apply to get a concealed carry license, right?
I think that it wouldn't negate much of the bill. It might negate that one provision. Again, this is based on speculation at this point. The, again, I think what we're looking for is to try to create a framework moving forward. This is a framework that has a basis in the history and traditions of the United States, and ultimately, we hope that, you know, insurers will react.
Another suggestion you're making is about establishing a firearms permit that is carried on a person while they're having to conceal carrying. Explain to me how this provision would work.
I think it would work like a driver's license. And this is something when we were consulting with the law enforcement community. This was something that they had brought up, where when you're in, for instance, a car and you're stopped, to have a license on you so that you could say, I'm a licensed individual, and also to declare that I have a gun in this location in my car. And so that minimizes misunderstandings with law enforcement and potentially dangerous situations. So I believe it would function more or less like a driver's license.
Members, any further questions?
Thank you. Maybe for Attorney General's Office, one of the testimonies on pages three hundred ninety-two out of five hundred sixty-four and three hundred ninety-three, Ellen Carson recommends a number of amendments. And those four amendments seem to strengthen protections that would require greater evaluation of mental health and other kinds of conditions that Department of Health and Hawaii Public Safety and Hawaii Family Court could provide. Has your office had any discussions with some of these other agencies? Because it would seem as though in many instances, this would be a good type of safeguard to be adding in the amendments.
So, thank you, Senator. So one thing I'll note is that in this particular version of the bill, and this is SB Twelve Thirty, it does not have any amendments that relate to Section one thirty-four dash seven, which is the so-called mental health, which involves mental health prohibitors. The mental health prohibitor found in Section one thirty-four dash seven C three, or C in general, but specifically C three in the administration bill, which is SB Twelve Eighty-two, does propose an amendment to that specifically to try to update the language regarding mental health prohibitors into a more modern sense and one that is more targeted towards addressing the real concerns that people have regarding mental health. The original mental health prohibitor that came into effect in nineteen eighty-one is, you know, it was right after John Hinckley attempted to assassinate Rahm, right? So it has a little bit of a, an antiquated feel to it. And so there are ways of updating that. Ultimately, it's not in this bill, but it would be potentially an amendment that this committee could consider.
Okay, I'm just raising this because one of the thoughts was if this, you know, bill is likely to be the Senate vehicle, then certainly we would wanna encourage the addition of areas in the bill that may be in other legislation but are not in this bill. So thank you.
Real quick, what I had in here. Have you guys consulted with the Insurance Commissioner on this insurance provision that you're trying to get inserted into the bill?
I believe we have. Nick, could you just maybe just speak just a little bit?
Yeah.
Thanks, Senator. Nicholas McLean, Deputy Solicitor General in the Office of the Attorney General. As part of the drafting and consultation process, we have had some discussions with staff at the Insurance Commission. It's our understanding that there are, so that's the initial answer to your question. And then, if I may just, to pick up on the earlier thread. So it's our understanding that even when an insurance product is not necessarily available in Hawaii, there may be ways of selling that insurance product across state lines, which would allow for the provision of, for example, a excess liability coverage plan or general liability insurance, which I believe the understanding would be that that would be responsive to the requirement that the amendment would.
Because, yeah, this seems to be like a new line of insurance, and normally, any new line of insurance has to be authorized by the insurance company to be available in the state of Hawaii. So that's why their concurrence insofar as the multi-state applies or not is kind of important.
It's my understanding that this would be seen as a form of excess, excess line insurance or a general liability insurance. It might also be covered by some homeowner's insurance policies.
Okay, but that determination has not been made yet.
There has not been a formal administrative determination.
Do you, don't, do you think that, given the fact that these are unanswered questions, and you yourself acknowledge it by a prospective date, that this legislature should take up the conversation of insurance requirements, you know, later on? Or otherwise, just make it part and parcel of the bill now rather than putting a prospective date into it?
Well, I think there are certainly important conversations that need to be have, need to be had in terms of the, the structure of the requirement. As I mentioned, this provision was modeled on the provision in New Jersey, which, as we understand it, has a similar.
Perspective, isn't it?
I believe so.
Okay. And then, real quickly, just your thoughts on the comments of HPD insofar as district court not being a suitable venue for appeal?
So the, thank you. So I think that with respect to how we want to go about dealing with challenges, I think there's multiple ways of kind of addressing that. District court, I think it's correct that, I mean, they have kind of a different type of jurisdiction. It's misdemeanors, but it's also family. I mean, it's basically a whole bunch of wide array of issues from small claims and civil court, you know, different civil claims. I mean, they could add this, it seems to me, and this is what was suggested, suggested in the Admin Package Bill of SB Twelve Eighty-four, is that the proper method for review would be, or the best method, would be a contested case hearing. And a contested case hearing has a lot of advantages in that the administration or agency would be the one making the determination. It's subject to a very well-known method of appeal with an appellate record. And it would be accompanied with a robust case law already on the books that people understand. And so I, I think I would tend to agree with HPD's officer that the district court method is not the ideal method. But there does need to be a method for reviewing these determinations to ensure that people's rights are protected.
What about the AG's office?
The AG's office?
The contested case hearing with your office.
So the.
Does HPD suggest themselves? So what about, you know, if not them, then determine?
So the AG in the current Chapter one thirty-four has no role at all with respect to granting of permits. The AG's office, what it does under the current law is promulgate certain forms.
So HPD, a possible contested case.
Correct, because they make the decision, and then, and then that decision is then, would then go maybe one step higher to a hearings office.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair.
Senator Elafante?
Yes, my question.
Okay. There was any further questions? If not, thank you. We're gonna take a brief recess prior to taking the vote. Thank you for your patience. We're reconvening the Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs on this Monday, February sixth, at three o'clock in Room Two Two Five. We're in the process now of making decisions on the bills on this agenda. For the first measure, Senate Bill Eight Sixty-two relating to counties, since the cities is already doing it, they should continue to do it. So I'm gonna request that we pass this measure as is, any discussion, members? If not, Senator Elafante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB Eight Six Two unamended. Chair O'Kai votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Senator Awah?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, measure passes.
Thank you. On Senate Bill Eight Seventy-five relating to the counties, all of us have these homes in our neighborhoods that unfortunately are just derelict and neighbors are angry and the city really can't do anything except go through a very long, protracted process to get their house condemned and ultimately sold. So I'd like to allow the city to go down that route in a more expeditious fashion. So I'd like to recommend that we pass this measure as is. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elafante, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB Eight Seven Five as is, noting five members' presence from the committee. Are there any objections or reservations? Hearing none, measure has passed, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. On Senate Bill Ten Fifty-Five relating to elections, it contemplates sensitive places, particularly for voting locations. We're gonna rule, I mean, since the following bill, or Twelve Thirty, touches on sensitive places, we're gonna defer this measure indefinitely. For the next measure, Senate Bill Eight Twenty-One relating to fireworks, despite the police department saying that they somehow need a search warrant for a draw, the FAA won't allow them to fly it during fireworks displays. My recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elafante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB Eight Two One as is, noting the five members' presence. Any objections or reservations?
No.
Noting the objection from Senator Awah. Mr. Chair, measure passes.
Thank you. On Senate Bill Twelve Thirty relating to firearms, we wanna make a number of amendments to this bill, many of them based on the Attorney General's suggestions. One of which is to require that when a person carrying a firearm is stopped by a law enforcement officer or is a driver or passenger in a vehicle stopped by a law enforcement officer, the person shall immediately disclose to the law enforcement officer that the person is carrying a firearm and, upon request, identify the specific location of the firearm and present to the law enforcement officer a license or credentials to carry a firearm. That's one of the AG's recommendations. The second is to provide the criminal record history, criminal history record check may be conducted by county police departments on applicants for licenses to carry a pistol or revolver and ammunition pursuant to Section one thirty-four dash nine HRS. I'm gonna use the recommended amendments of the AG's testimony that talks about replacing handgun with pistol or revolver for clarity. We're going to have the appeal process be the responsibility of HPD, not the court, but with HPD. And we're also gonna defect the date to one one twenty fifty. Sorry, one last amendment is we're gonna take Department Transportation Services amendments, which ask that we include paratransit right now. It just says buses cannot be a place where you bring on a firearm. They want to include paratransit as well. So just one second. My apologies. Just so we put this bill in the right context, this is gonna be the gun vehicle, so to speak, as this bill moves through the session. So we're gonna be pulling the language from the administration bill that is Senate Bill Twelve Eighty-two, incorporating certain relevant provisions from that bill relating to the regulation of firearms, including the preamble of that measure. So those are the assertment of amendments suggested for Twelve Thirty. Members, any discussion? Yes, Senator?
Chair, point of clarification on the proposed amendments to take HPD as the appeal. Did you mean with the respective county, with law enforcement and not just HPD?
Oh, sorry.
Just clarification.
Yeah, so Awah sent you.
I know, I'm looking high, though. As a former county council member, yes, I understand, but just for clarification.
Thank you for bringing that up, yes, with the county police departments.
Okay.
Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elafante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments SB Twelve Thirty. Are there any, noting the members' presence, are there any objections?
No.
Any eyes or reservations? Okay, Mr. Chair, measure passes with amendments.
Thank you. On Senate Bill Thirteen Thirty-two relating to emergency management, this is to help us during times of crisis to make sure all of our agencies are well-coordinated. I'd like to pass this measure as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elafante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB Thirteen Thirty-two as is. Any objections or reservations? Noting the objections from Senator Awah. Noting the objections from Senator Awah, Mr. Chair, measure passes.
On Senate Bill fourteen seventy relating to corrections, I'd like to pass this measure with amendments. One, to delete Section two, which requires that all guards have to wear body cameras while on duty, and also to amend that all correction facilities housing women are to have this camera coverage, not just the the Winward, the Olamana, or the Kailua Women's Prison, that all facilities housing women need to have a hundred percent camera coverage. So those are the two suggested amendments. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to report out SB fourteen seventy with amendments. Any objections? Any reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, measure passes with amendments.
On Senate Bill fifteen ninety-one relating to the security of public places, the members have conferred and would like to defer this measure indefinitely. On the last measure on the agenda, Senate Bill eleven sixty-one relating to active-duty military entitlements. I would like to be fair to our fellow state workers who keep us all safe. I would like to pass this measure with one amendment. ERS noted that Section two of this bill is problematic for them, so I'd like to delete that Section two. Pass the measure out with that amendment. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass out SB eleven sixty-one with amendments, noting the members' presence. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, the measure passes with amendments.
Great, thank you very much, members. We're adjourned.